Trustees. I'd like to confirm that everybody's here, and I think they are. Just make sure everybody can hear me. Would you all, that I can see, all raise your hands if you're hearing me? Rick, are you hearing me? Dave? Are you hearing me? Roger? Are you, Roger, are you hearing me too? Great, and Danielle? Danielle, are you hearing me too? Okay, and Joan? Joan, are you hearing, okay, great, okay, I think everybody's all set. It's now, what time, let's see, what time is it?
7:02.
7:02, Tuesday, October 13, 2020. This is an open meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees. This meeting is being conducted remotely due to the state of emergency in the Commonwealth resulting from the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus and still in effect inconsistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law, this meeting will allow public comment by means of the chat function only. For this meeting, the Needham Board of Library Trustees is convening by Zoom app as posted on the town website, identifying how the public may do. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all participants are participating via video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that others may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Before we get to our first item on the agenda, which will be website, some ground rules for effective conduct of our business for compliance with the Governor's executive order and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair, I will invite members by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions to the extent practicable. We will keep the meeting somewhat informal, which has been our practice. Nonetheless, as in prior Zoom meetings, two rules need to be observed. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly and in a way that promotes accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you so that we don't talk over each other. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote, a requirement of the Governor's executive order of March 12. The only other thing I'd like to request is right from the beginning, a motion to automatically continue this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, November 10, 2020 at 7:00 PM, should any technical difficulties arise that keep us from continuing this meeting. Could I have that motion? So moved. Anna, thank you, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, I'm gonna go down the list, Anna?
Yay.
Rick? Rick? Rick?
You're muted.
You're muted, you're muted, yeah.
Hi.
Rick, you're muted, yeah. Jay?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
That was unanimous, thank you. Let's go to our first topic, website. We have Dave Davison, thank you very much, Dave, for giving up yet another evening, and Roger, same to you. I know it's a busy time for you, and I kind of regret that our moment where it was most critical to have your help and attention on this is the time you probably least wanted to have to have one more thing to think about. But I will, why don't you take the floor, Dave, or would you like to begin?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. We met with the board last month at your meeting, and at that time I had promised that we were gonna do our due diligence and weigh different options and see how we could potentially use the current content management provider to accommodate the library's needs and to report back to you at your next meeting. And I believe you may have been told right before the holiday weekend that I have decided, and the town manager supports that decision after consultation with Roger and talking and feedback that we received from Civic Plus, that it does make sense for the library to seek a different provider specifically to library needs to serve the patrons. It's just generally that the reasons I got there was, one, none of these are certainly a surprise to the work that you all have done over the last few months on this issue, but Civic Plus does provide a low-cost solution for cities and towns to have a web presence and be able to communicate with its citizens and businesses and taxpayers. But their, but their cost is low because they have a set platform. And to the extent that communities are able to use that platform to convey their message in order to share information, in order to update the public, that is good. Customization, they are open to, but there is a cost. My thought was perhaps that because there were weaknesses with their platform in order to address what the library was looking for, and there's certainly documented instances of other libraries who have departed from Civic, Civic Plus because of the weaknesses, that they apparently have opted. That is not the market in particular they're interested in. It just doesn't work in their model, and if they were to make, if they could make some of the changes that we were seeking, there was gonna be a cost. And then the last point that resonated with me was the feedback that I got from library employees in terms of their desire to see something different, and they explained what doesn't work from their standpoint about Civic Plus and why they've seen other products that are, that would work better for the library. And for all those reasons, as well as the board itself, I had recommended that we have the library move forward with a different platform. And as I said, the town manager was supportive of that. And if Roger had anything extra to add, I would ask him to speak to that.
No, I don't have anything extra to add. I mean, you pretty, you've covered everything that we've spoken about previously, and so, yeah. Nope, nothing else to add.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate both, you know, how it's turned out because I do think that, you know, I do believe that is probably the best solution, but I also appreciate that, you know, that you've moved it along so that we can start on this project, really is a big help. I do have to ask whether Civic Plus was responsive on any of these issues, and I think I'll ask, Rob, are you, you want to just, I don't know whether there are certain things that Civic Plus could do within its platform that would not be costly for the near term while we're getting this other website up and running that's actually more what we need? Is there, Roger, was there any feedback, or?
No, there was, well, there was feedback, but it wasn't the kind of feedback that you were interested in. So there was nothing in the short term other than, you know, the staff itself redesigning or going through and fixing what they think they could fix because all the rest was gonna cost money and take time.
I see.
Yeah, there was, there was really nothing, even, even some of the small things really, you know, it just things that the staff, the library staff themselves would have had to address. There was nothing that they could, that Civic Plus had in mind.
Huh, okay, all right. Well, I guess this is, you know, the direction we need to go, and Rob, K, Jay, do you, any of you have any thing you'd like to?
Well, first, I'd like to add my, my thanks as well for your, you know, thoughtful consideration throughout this process. It's very much appreciated first. And then really two questions. We get it where Civic Plus is not gonna, you know, step in and start responding to the long list of changes we're hoping to make and which will become part of a redesign, but are there not any, for example, the most obviously, the search issue where I hear again and again from people who go to the website and, and confront the search at the top that does not search for the library? Is that, you know, was there any conversation about that in terms of whether a quick fix can be had?
Well, they, I'm sorry, I think that was one of the few things that they, or like, I think that was really the only thing that they had, had changed, and I believe that the, the search, when you go to the library page, I haven't, I haven't tested it recently, but I believe that they had made an adjustment so that when you went to the library main page and you did a search, it would just search the library pages. So not necessarily the catalog, or give you an option for the catalog, but it would just search the library changes, that, that, that ability to search the catalog through the search bar, they, that would have been a change that they would have had to have made, like in several of the other, several other options in some of the websites you, you pointed out, that was an option. So you would click search, and you would have an option, either search the Minute, Minute Man Library catalog or the, the library webpages themselves. So that was just, that was gonna be a bigger change than just, than adding that as an option within the search. So I think that was something that they had spoken about, and I'd have to go back and look at the emails between Terry Wilson in my office and them, but I think that was one minor thing that they had looked at, and I thought they'd said they had made that change.
Danielle, Danielle, you seem to be waving.
I, I just, while Roger was talking, I just went into the website to double check it, and they did make the change, so thank you, thank you. Like, I looked for Hunger Games, so like, any, you know, dystopian teen books come up for like a Hunger Games list, so it doesn't search the catalog like Roger said, but it'll search the pages within that, so you can get like book suggestions, stuff like that.
And I had just, thank you, one, one more question, which is, you know, we look for you to let us know what role, if any, you're looking to play as we continue to explore, you know, the next steps for deciding who the outside vendor will be and who the library staff will be working closely with. I know, Dave, you expressed, you know, some concerns about things we need to be sensitive to, and, and I'm sure we wanna be sensitive to the issues that concern the town, and so you'll let us know, you know, how we should keep you involved, to what extent in the effort that we make to go forward from here.
Certainly, the, we, we had a preliminary discussion, Ian and Dimitri, Roger and I, certainly to, to the point of any technical aspects that, that we need to play a role in, ITC will be there. And of course, the licensing and contracting, that once we're at the point to do that, we'll assist them with that as well, but that, that happens day in and day out on the contracting and licensing.
And I assume, and Dimitri, you know that process, how we will go forward with that. But the first thing will be, I suppose, interviewing. And I know I've heard from Dimitri and Danielle that you would like, you will be the library's sort of point people, staff point people for this whole project. Correct, Ann?
Right.
Yes, okay, and so, you know, I guess we'll have to see if trustee wants to participate in that as well, just to keep up to date if nothing else.
And I am, and I am available if, if, you know, you do want another, another set of eyes or something on it.
Okay.
More than.
That might be, great, yeah, okay, that's super. And so there would be some kind of entering, K?
Yes, I just wanted to say, before we move off the topic of the existing website, I did notice that the website hits right now have, and statistics have gone from 4,000 this time last year to 16,000 for the month.
Yeah.
And so there's a huge amount of traffic there, so I don't know if there are kind of two other little tweaks that might be possible, since this is not gonna happen for several months presumably. One tweak would be to get the information about, is the library open? It's so, if you don't know where to even find whether the library is open, is it possible to get that higher up, you know, before the, the page break, before, without having to scroll down? And the second thing is that new photo that Civic Plus put up is a too large a file. It takes a very long time to load, and so it's worse than the stack of books because it's a large, long loading file. So those would be two things that if by any chance we could fix those and get, for the next several months till the new website comes up, that would be, I think, very significant. And thank you.
I can check, you're welcome. I can check on the image, but the information, the content that's on the page and where, where it sits is up to the library staff to set up. That's not, that's not specific to, to Civic Plus or us, that's all designed and put up there by the, by the library staff. So whatever content, whatever content is on that page below the picture and the icons and all, it, it's the staff as far as I understand.
And K, it does say that, you know, pretty near the top, that the library is closed for the foreseeable future, does say that.
Yeah, it's not near that, it's below the, you know, it's below the fold, as they say. So.
On the phone?
It's below the fold. If people don't know to scroll down, there's, it's not there, so it's a little, you know, it's hidden.
Danielle, and then Rob.
I can move it up, but as Roger said, you know, I can't move anything above the picture, so we're pretty limited with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so anyway, yes, if the, you know, if the photo could, if it could be replaced with a, a smaller file that loads faster, that would be a great thing.
Rob, I'll see, I'll see what I'll, I'll talk, yeah.
Great, Rob, you had something?
Sure, sure, a few things, I'll go as quick as I can, though. First of all, huge thanks to Dave and Roger for, for looking into this and for working with Civic Plus in the past. We recognize that it's not the easiest getting them to, to get any of these changes made, and we're excited to really have a win for the whole town with this website. So I think we heard that Dimitri and Danielle will be working, sort of spearheading this from the, from, from the library's standpoint. Jay and K, would you be okay if just the three of us continued to work with them and consult on vendor selection and design?
That, that sounds, that sounds great. We should probably follow up with a, you know, a meeting with, with, you know, Danielle and Dimitri soon to talk about next steps on that front.
So I think that probably the, the first next step on, in all of this, and this was discussed earlier, is selecting the vendor. You know, we select, we found two that have done the vast majority of our peer library websites. Jay and I, I met with them way back in, I think it was July or early August, and we could, we could reach out to them and have, you know, the three of us, JK and I, Dimitri and Danielle, have interviews. I'm sure that they would be very happy to, to make a presentation to all of us, and, you know, based on that, we could, we could do a selection. But my, my hope would be vendor selection could be a relatively quick process because we do know, we've reviewed the peer library websites, we know what their price ranges are, so, you know, we can, we can certainly circle up after, after this meeting and figure out a good time to, to start scheduling those, those presentations with the vendors. And then, of course, once we do have a vendor selected and we've negotiated a price with them, then we could, we would, we would reach out to Dave and make sure that the contract process goes through the normal, the normal channels. Just trying to see if there's anything else. I think that was, that was the big thing on my list, is just the vendor selection process and just being able to move forward as quickly as possible so we can get this. Some of the vendors said they could get websites up, and I think as little as, probably three months would be the quickest they could do to get a really well-thought-out website put up. So hopefully we can get this up and running in the winter.
Dave, could I ask you, how, what, what is the typical length for the contracting process?
Usually about four to six weeks, provided that the vendor understands that they're contracting with a governmental entity and some of the liberties that they may take with a private, a private individual, they won't have that same flexibility with the government, but usually.
I'm sure these, these, these vendors would know that because they've gone through it elsewhere, yeah. Jay?
I'm wondering, Dave, if maybe, you know, we can have a conversation at some point so that I can at least, and Rob and K and I can be more familiar with how the contracting process works so that we can assist in moving, in moving that along, because I have to admit, I'm pretty unfamiliar with how, with how it would work in terms of the town and a vendor.
Great.
And I think, I'm not sure if, if Dave and Roger heard, but we did get support from both the Friends as well as the Library Foundation of Needham for the upfront cost of the new website as well as for the ongoing maintenance and support costs. So we've got the, the funding committed at this point, so this, just a matter of selecting a vendor and then negotiating a price and getting that contract through the process.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, I'm excited, this is a wonderful development, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with actually both of you and, and implementing this. It looks like we will need to work together to keep everything in sync with the town website and to make sure we're following all the procedures that we need to. But much appreciated, yeah, and thank you to K as well, Kate, excuse me. All right, well, would you like to spend the evening with us, or Dave, Roger, or would you like to eat dinner?
No, some dinner in the Supreme Court, I guess, is what's on the docket right now.
Oh, yeah, okay, understood.
Thank you for the offer, have a good evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joan, thank you very much for your part in this. I know you don't come to the tippy end of this agenda every time, but I'm glad you're here, it's an exciting, it's an exciting moment.
It is, it is.
To finally get this underway and, and for the, our ability to do it totally dependent on private financing from the two supporting organizations. It's, it's a great step, it's gonna be such an improvement and really such a plus for the town.
Absolutely.
And all of our, our patrons. And let's go to the minutes of September 8th. Are there any changes, anyone? No changes? I did not have any changes either, thank you, Jeff and K.
Thank you, Jeff, they were wonderful and thorough, I thank you for a great job.
Well, nice synopsis on the website discussion, too, that was difficult, I'm sure, you know, put together. So could I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes?
Oh, moved.
Thank you, Tom, a second?
Second.
Okay, K, thank you, okay, all in favor, K, Jay?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
And I am in favor, and so that makes it unanimous, thank you very much, that's, the minutes are approved as written. That almost never happens anymore. I guess it probably means that we're all reading the minutes more avidly than we did it maybe at one time.
Or not.
Either that or we're not.
Or not reading them.
Oh, well, maybe, maybe that's the case, I doubt it. So know that that's why it's a rare occasion. So, Ann? Guess you have the floor. I don't see any gifts for the gift list. There's one item that we will need to vote on, I think, but.
Before we start, I want to be sure that you all saw your invitation to the Massachusetts Library Trustees Annual Meeting on November 14th. Did you all get the invite to that? Okay, great.
Looks like a great topic, yeah.
Yeah. I don't have anything to highlight, does anybody have a question on anything up to information for agenda items? It would be mainly just the reports from all the different.
I do, yeah, just some insight on, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of attendance on the budget submission guidelines and, and updates and so forth, capital budgets. So just interested to know what, what's the word about capital budgeting this year, given everything?
What, what are we proposing, yeah?
I wouldn't say that there's been a direct word, don't do it, or anything like that. I, I keep hearing caution all the time, and the only thing that we have was the chairs, we have the chairs, and I wouldn't put the chairs in again because I think the Finance Committee is just gonna throw them out.
Town meeting.
Yeah, and we also have, Danielle has upgrades for her, for the technology upgrades. I do wanna put the technology upgrades in, but that's, that's actually the only thing we have.
That'll be a capital request?
Yes, yes.
Everyone can get Zoom cameras.
Yeah, we can put cameras in our regular computers maybe, and then I don't have to sit with laptop in front of me and a computer beside me.
That's the plan, I wanna get everyone portable ones so you can do whatever you want with them, and it'll be beautiful.
Okay. So are there any questions about any of the reporting from the different departments?
Well, I had a question, keeping up with the, the topic of budgeting. Our budget request, what does that look like, or is it all prepared yet or not?
Not prepared.
Okay, all right, will you be?
Working on state forms.
Well, the date is coming up, October 26th, you say?
And the ARIS report, the statistic, annual statistical report for the state has been submitted.
Yes, then congratulations.
And now I'm working on financial figures, and as soon as I finish that, then I'll start with the capital, and then when I finish that, I'll start with the budget.
When you say your financial figures, what are you talking about?
These are figures that go to the state, every year you have to fill out quite a few little forms about how much money your town gave you in town meeting or whatever form of government you have, because you have to meet certain requirements so you won't get your state aid.
Okay, all right, so this goes not to an MBLC, or where does it go?
MBLC.
Yeah, it does.
They collect them.
All right, okay. Well, will you be in touch with me with drafts of the, the capital request and the budget request? Yeah, please, as with as much, you know, lead time as you can, and so that we can consider it. Sounds good, thank you.
I had another question, you know, you're probably not gonna be able to answer it, but it was on Sarah's report, the, on the overdrive partner analysis. That looked kind of interesting, I don't know if they've had that data in terms of how do we compare in terms of overdrive with the other, other libraries and other systems?
The Minute Man overdrive performance is far superior to every other, every other library networks in the state. We, we are a very literate group around here. And we raid them. And we raid them. We thought for sure when we went into all the cooperativeness that everybody would be draining our product. And that's not fair, not true at all. We, we kind of have been, the Minuteman customers have been draining everybody else's.
Ah, okay.
So.
Yeah. It's just performance. It's not in terms of titles or those sorts of things. It's really about, about performance. That's what the analysis is.
It's, it's, um, how, how many you're circulating, how your circulation figures are. And Minutemen's are very high.
Okay. Kay, I think you're, were you trying to say something or Tom?
I did just have a question about the director's report about the Danielle's part of it, if that's appropriate now.
Let me see, Tom, what, what topic are you on?
I, I had a question concerning Hoopla and Libby.
Can we continue with that? Tom, why don't we do that? And then Kay, perhaps you can get back to the technology request. Okay. Tom?
Yes. Uh, I've been using Hoopla and Libby significantly since, uh, since we, we, well, that's just it, since the pandemic. And the, uh, we, we're limited to eight books a month on Hoopla.
We raised, we raised it when we, when this all started. It, we were lower than that before, but.
Okay. And my, and my, my daughter belongs to Brookline and she has, I don't know how many she has total, but she has 15 more this month. And how much does it cost to add more? Cause I've, I've used my eight every time, but one month. Yeah. And I would like, I'd like to.
I'll talk to Sarah and see how much it costs and let you know.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, I, I, are you, which topic are you on, Jay?
I, I have a question about, about Libby and I don't know that this is negotiable or not, but I, I've also been taking my share of Libby, mostly audiobooks. I've been reading and walking simultaneously. And I'm struck by some books are long and you literally don't have enough time to finish them. Uh, and if somebody is waiting, you don't finish them. And so I'm not sure if anyone has conversations with Libby or if that's something that's flexible, but as a practical matter, it's, it's practically impossible to finish a long audiobook in the amount of time without running the risk that you have to give it up before you're done.
What is the limit? What is the circulation period?
Get what the total number?
14 days.
Actually guys, you can extend that if you go into your settings to go with three weeks.
Oh, even if, even, oh, you mean as a, as a starting point?
As a starting point, you can set up your account. So everything is three weeks. And they'll give you the maximum amount of time. It just arbitrarily is chosen two weeks for all your settings, but you can go into your settings and change that.
If you return it, if you finish it early, you can always return it or.
About finishing it early. I finished, I finished plenty early, but it's the lengthy ones where someone else's is on reserve where you're, you know, you're stuck.
There's not much we can do about the very, very long ones, but you definitely can change your due date.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that's good. Yeah.
For the long ones, you know, audiobooks, the long ones, you can put them up to 2.0 and it'll sound like the FedEx guy.
Great.
You're getting through them quicker.
Wonderful.
I thought if you just walk faster. No, it doesn't work that way.
All right. Um, now Kay, I think you had a question about technology.
Right. Um, under Danielle's section, I noticed that she participated in a seminar called the library's role in the community recovery strategies to narrow the digital divide. And I'm, uh, what I'm concerned about the people who normally would rely on the library for their computer use. And what thread, I noticed that, uh, we're lending out some laptops and I'm just wondering how we're addressing the needs of those people who are usually among the most needy of in the town who don't have computer access and that's been cut off because of their library.
Dimitri can answer your question.
Well, Danielle and I have been working on that. So we have what we're doing because it's really hard to find equipment to buy. There are 15 Chromebooks that children's have from a grant through the foundation that they were going to use for girls to code. Of course, that program's been canceled this year. So the pilot program, uh, we asked Paula Dugan if we could borrow five of the Chromebooks and start a lending program with that. We're working on that right now. Actually Danielle and I both can be in the library on Thursday. We're looking at copying Cambridge Public Library. Cambridge Public Library is like 30 or 40 that they loan out. In order to speed this up, we're not going to use Sierra. We're going to just do a kind of similar to what we're doing with booking the study rooms where we'll use somebody's library card. And they, they, they'll agree to the terms. We'll say, you know, over 18, one per family. We'll set a lending period and they'll base, we'll set up appointments basically for people to call us and we'll put it in a paper bag. We'll be out there and give it to them, put it on the table, have them take it and then bring it back the same way. So the answer, short answer is we're working on that. We're hoping to finalize that soon. My, my hope is to have it up by the beginning of October. And the other thing we're hoping to, uh, which we're actually already doing, we just haven't announced it, is curbside printing. People are already sending us their print jobs. We're not charging for them. We print them out in an envelope and we put them out there along with the, uh, curbside pickup. But we're going to formalize that by, by publicizing it more that we will be able to do. We, we are doing it, but we'll publicize that and say, well, we can do that for you. You have something you need to print, send us a print job to our Neelib email at references and we'll print it for them, put it in an envelope, put it out by curbside pickup. So to answer your question, Kay, we've been really concerned about how to extend computing access to the public that used to need the library. The few folks who've been in, in contact with, you know, some of our regulars that we knew, you know, I used to work every Thursday night and I worked one Saturday a month. So I used to have a sense of who they are. The ones that don't want to use anything but a desktop, we can't really help them. We'd like to. We're offering this. We have a couple of people who are like, okay, they'll try the Chromebook. In the meantime, we're trying to also, uh, trying to figure out funding for Wi-Fi hotspots. Those are also very difficult to obtain. We're trying to do them through TechSoup. And, and the thing with those is we have to use a credit card. We can't do it by purchase order. So with Anne, we've been talking with Anne and Dave, uh, Dave, they've said to try to figure out if the town will give us access to a credit card, if we can get, I think Anne, they said purchase cards or something like a debit card. So we're still working on that part, but in the meantime, until we get that going, we're going to get the Chromebooks out by the beginning of October.
Yeah. Cause that was, that was my question that prepped up. I mean, the two parts are, yeah, having access to a computer, but it's also having access to the Wi-Fi with the internet.
Right.
And, and probably don't, they don't have either. So it, I don't know, when you pass out the computer, would it be useful that if we could identify, um, public hotspots that around town that maybe they could take advantage of?
Well, look, the two public places are us and Starbucks blocks of the street.
They can sit in front of the parking lot by the library and the Wi-Fi does reach.
Some people do.
Yes, we have been very conscious of that. We'd really want to get the technology out, printing, internet technologies for everyone who had relied on us and unfortunately now can't because of this pandemic.
And just to add to that, you know, if these five do well, these five Chromebooks, we will probably, Jeff, don't put this in the minutes. We'll reach out to Paula and see if we could borrow the other Chromebooks and see if we can, you know, that would be great if we can get all 15 going. But again, we're going to start with these five and see how that goes.
Yeah. See the demand. Yeah. I, I think that's great. I'd just like to say, Dimitri, that really sounds like you and Danielle really have been pretty proactive on this and I'm very pleased about the, the curbside printing. I had not heard of that, but it stands to reason that people don't have any way to get these things printed if they don't have their own facilities. I, I do wonder, once it gets cold, um, if someone doesn't have a car, they're going to get mighty cold sitting on the front steps of the library trying to get their access. So, um, those, you know, hopefully the hotspots will, you know, be something that can be solved. There is funding for it. It's just that how the payment method is the problem.
Right.
Okay.
And just to add, you know, from, from when we've had our last general staff meeting, I got comments from the staff, the CIRC staff and they're, and I'm sorry, I'll stop in a minute. The three things that the public are really looking for, they're, they're looking for computing access, which we're hoping to address. They're looking for, you know, like I said, internet, like you said, Tom, and that's something we're hoping to address. And a place, the space, like study rooms, that part unfortunately is the one thing we can't fix for them right now, you know? But everything else, we're hoping to address and get it all ratcheted up and going in the next six weeks, I hope.
Okay. Good. Now, Tom.
Yeah. As for the, uh, the Chromebooks and Wi-Fi availability and hotspots and all that, how is the school doing it? Cause they must have more of a situation.
They have their own Chromebooks that have their own nomenclature where they have, um, software already set up on it, set up on it. As a matter of fact, at one point Paula had thought that she could lend out some of our Chromebooks to the schools, but the schools basically said that they can't because they need to have them secure and have them all set up the same. So they have their own, they have their own resources and they have their own Chromebooks that they get, I don't know if they're Chromebooks or other type of tablets or laptops that they're giving out to the students. So, um, from my selfish perspective, we get to use these 15 for, hopefully for our patrons. So, that's kind of what Danielle and I are focusing on. But in terms of the students, I think the school is giving them assistance for that.
I'm actually meeting, um, I have a technology, um, meeting on Friday and I'm meeting with, um, my counterpart in Cambridge and I'm going to pick his brain a little on his 40 or 50 Chromebooks that they have.
Okay.
Yeah.
About their method of circulating them or?
Their method of circulating them, how they set them up, just, you know, everything that they're doing with them since they've been doing this a little longer than we have. Since just Cambridge is just, it's a different environment than Needham.
Yeah. I mean, no, no one knows how long this is going to go on, but you'd like to get this up and running fast because, you know, they need it now.
Well, last thing I want to say, we're not looking to circumvent Sierra or tech services, but the process to set them up and get the machines catalog, to get the Chromebooks catalog. I, I just feel like I just want to get this going and we talked with Diane and once we get these five going this way, we'll see how it goes. We'll, we'll see how we're going to move forward with the other, the others, but I feel it, it's perfectly safe to, based on what other libraries are doing. The loss is minimal. It, you know, it's possible some, someone might lose it, steal it, do whatever. But again, the implication is that we're going to block their card. We'll go, you know, we'll say, you know, we, we hope it won't come to that. And it's from what I see from the Metro Minuteman libraries, uh, the, the ones that are doing it and Danielle, you could chime in on this. It really hasn't been an issue so far.
Cambridge has, like I said, like 30, 40, 50, and they haven't lost one that I know of.
Anna?
Yeah. How long are the loaners for? Are you rotating them or giving them to assigned individuals?
So we're, we're trying to work that out. We're trying, the thing is that we have to loan them out and then we have to quarantine them as well. So what we're hoping to do is loan them out. It's going to be a little rigid at first. We're going to, we're hoping to set it that Monday afternoon, somebody could pick it up. Bring it back Friday afternoon. That gives us an opportunity to sanitize it, quarantine it until Monday afternoon when the next person wants to take it. So we're not going to be able to do it like you want it on a Wednesday. We're not going to be able to do that, but we think a week should be more than enough time for somebody to plan their computing, whether it's schoolwork, bills, whatever it is that somebody needs to work on, on a.
Wanted to be able to quarantine them and yet give them people enough time to actually do whatever project homework they actually need the device for.
And we think with five, we'll be able to do that to start with and then, and then we'll see how it goes. You know, obviously we'll adjust as we get more information and see how, how the program works. Anne?
Once we get the plan all together, we would also like to run it by the foundation because the foundation was the, uh, there were people who gave us the Chromebooks and it was for the children, a children's program, but now that all that has changed, we would like them to know that we'd like to use them for something else.
And, and Joan, we will attribute that, that these Chromebooks were funded by the foundation and then we'll, we'll give people an explanation as how, how we got them, you know, they were initially intended for another purpose, but because what's going on, we're, we're hoping, we don't want them to sit around. We'd like to be able to use them.
Absolutely.
Access to people.
Great initiative.
They were funded by the foundation.
Great job.
I'm moving ahead a little bit if that, if everyone has had their, most of their points made. I see that you managed to have, I don't know how you did this, but, um, a reference staff meeting that included part timers. I don't know how you pulled it off, but, um, with all the different schedules, but that's, it seems like a very positive thing. Was it a successful meeting and useful or?
Yes, it was. Zoom is your friend. We were able to get everybody to join with the exception of one. It was a case of her other job prevented her, but we gave her a recording of the session so she was able to see it.
Yeah. Excellent. Yeah. That's great. Let's see.
My power is flickering. So if, if you lose me.
Excuse me?
My power just flickered. So if you lose me.
Here. Oh, oh, I hope that isn't what's happening to you. Okay. Um, so let's move ahead. Buildings and grounds. Anything? I'd like to recognize Angel and Mario for getting some things done. Sounds like some things are getting accomplished, even though there's the list of things that are lagging and it looks like at the moment, um, you know, we've been on hold. While the schools got ventilated and whatever was required to get that started for the year. And some of these, uh, things that have been on the list for quite a while are ones that were suggested by the Commission on Disabilities, particularly having to do with the kitchenette in the community room. And so we'll keep them posted once those things finally get done, but I have a feeling they're not the highest priority, um, judging from how long they've been sitting in the queue. All right. Anyone on that subject? Okay. Let's move ahead to financial reports. Anne, I like your new line of running total. Uh, that's, that's helpful.
I have to confess that we did that before and it got dropped somehow. Now it's back.
Oh yeah. No, that's very helpful to know how much we have spent and it would be nice if Tom wanted to see that we're spending money. They see, you know, a little bit about the fewer, you know, the past history and the fiscal year of expenditures, not just the current month, if they're looking. And.
What is the fiscal year? Is it a calendar year? What is the fiscal?
No, July 1.
July 1.
On June 30.
Yeah. Yeah. And as far as trust funds, I think that that's all, all the expenditures for ones approved in fiscal 2020 last year. And as far as the budget, anybody have anything on, if anyone does, please wave, obviously. Looks like we will be catching up a bit with the books, periodicals and audio visual, um, where we are a little underspent, um, for the time of year that we are in, but once we pay for all the periodicals subscriptions, I guess we'll be in a little better, um, more right on track. Anybody have any comment? Okay. Let's keep going. So statistical report, I know. Kay, you made a mention of the large number of, um, well, there, there's several things, but you're, you had one comment about the regulation. Um, it's, it's great to see, you know, that the website is being used, um, so much more. I know people, I mean, what else can they rely on? At the phone and, and the, and the website. So I'm so excited that we're going to move ahead with the website. It's been a long time coming and I have to hand it to you, our working group for, you know, really, um, not only putting the time in and organizing, being savvy about what we don't have, what we need. Doing the homework, all that homework was a lot of homework and I appreciate that it took a lot of your time to do it and, um, but to see it successful is a thrill. So, thank you. Um, as far as statistics, just think about six, you know, how many things are being bagged? It's a lot of, a lot of, um, resources are going out on the curb. That's a lot of work. And although it's nowhere near the circulation that we, we typically have, if people were walking in and picking up their own. It's still a pretty impressive number and quite a feat for us, you know, for staff to, um, you know, handle all those requests. And I, I do thank them again for, um, all the effort that, that it's taken.
Any good comments about the curbside pickup too? People are quite pleased with it.
Well, I think so. I mean, people are thrilled that they can get anything really, you know, that's. Well, I think so. I mean, people are thrilled that they can get anything really, you know, that's, and you make it very easy.
And we've cleaned up the backlog of reserves that were from January, February, March and so forth. We're right up to date, so that.
Tell me, if someone wants something that the library, I mean, are people restricting their, how much are people restricting their requests to things that they see that the Needham Library owns and maybe has in?
I haven't. I've reserved, you know, I've asked for things that are, you know, through Minuteman. Maybe a little bit longer than, slightly longer to get them, but they're showing up.
I think we're pretty much back to normal on reserves.
Not so far as getting things from, you know, shipped from one library to another.
Right.
Well, that's great, yeah.
We weren't the only library that was way behind. Most of the libraries were and slowly but surely they've caught up.
I got a notice yesterday, I got something, I'm so excited.
Like Christmas or something, yeah. So, let's move on, let's keep going here. New business, is there any new business? Anna? Anna?
Yes, thank you, Carol. The Needham Diversity Initiative will be hosting their ninth annual diversity summit on November 15. And they have requested if the library could be a co-sponsor. Mean basically for the library to promote the event. And anybody who wants to participate is a free event. It'll be virtual and is from 12 to 5 p.m. There'll be different work breakup sessions on different topics on diversity and inclusion, mostly for people from, from the town or neighboring towns. And there'll be a keynote speaker. So in the past, we have, the library has co-sponsored the Martin Luther King a day and a few other events. So it'll be great if we could participate this time as well.
And tell me again the date?
In November 15th, which is a Sunday, from noon to 5.
Okay, and this is called the?
The Needham Diversity Initiative Summit and they're.
The one that's usually at Pollard, okay.
Yes, exactly. And this year's title is No Place For Hate Beyond the Lawn Signs. So we are calling people to take action.
Okay.
Anna, are they gonna need any assistance via Zoom or something like that for their conference?
There might because there'll be eight consecutive sessions going on. So it would, could the library lend a hand perhaps? Is that a possibility?
With the permission of the trustees, we can certainly lend them the, I can lend them the account and I will be available that day to work it, if that is what's needed. I can operate at any given time at least one room, a Zoom room or a webinar room, depending on what they're looking for. And I can certainly set this up ahead of time and give them the links so that they know it. And I can certainly turn over co-hosting capabilities.
Okay.
For that. It'll be great because I think that there, we're trying to identify how many Zoom accounts we can gather among the presenters. So that maybe, this might come in handy, so I'll mention it to them.
I've checked my schedule and I am available that day, so I will be happy to help if that is what's needed.
Well, I think we should, you know, we'll include that in a motion by the trustees before we finish here. What else is needed for us to participate, Anna, as a co-sponsor?
That's all, mostly promotion, promoting in the library's website, the library's social media. There is a flyer already available. So it's just for your, the okay of the, you know, trustees and then that information will be given to Danielle or I don't know who posts online, maybe Gay Allen.
And library notes.
Library notes.
Oh. Yep.
Could I, could I have a motion regarding our co-sponsoring the Needham Diversity Summit? And our helping out using both our Zoom account and our Gay Allen to help, help manage this process?
Agreed.
Second?
Second.
Who said that? Rick. Rick, thank you. All in favor, I'm just gonna go down the line. Kay?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Rick?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
And I am in favor unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Okay, we're gonna go to old business then. The Equity and Inclusion Resolution is a separate item, although we have a report on what has been done. Dimitri, it's in the director's report, is that from you or from Anne? I don't know.
That's from both of us. We both collect information from staff and of course from trustees and that's what we've got so far.
I'm not hearing you well.
That's from both of us, that's information we both collected from staff and trustees.
Okay, great. I see the first is a little confusing. It seemed like some of these, the first one, two, three, four, five, six items maybe belong in the different category of training and as opposed to programming.
I debate when I write those, not exactly sure where they should go.
Well, I think of the programming as things, programs that we're putting on or giving access to people ourselves. Is that a different perception than anyone else's or? And then the staff and staff training, trustee training is a separate one. If you take a program as a staff member or a trustee, I would think that we could list those things under staff and staff training. So it's sort of programming, materials, resources and, and our programming that we put on. So, but very, you know, still a very respectable collection of efforts on this topic, it seems to me, both in terms of current materials and, and trainings. And I see that Kay is, is the one who's working on programming because that's been the weak link with the library closed in particular, to find a way to do some programming that relates. So I, I think that's great that you've reached out in three different ways. Cambridge Multicultural Arts Center to other places about finding some artists of color to exhibit. So thank you.
Yes, you know, where are we seeing this list? I.
This is page seven of the director's report.
Oh, it's in the director's, okay.
Yep.
The scanned passage.
The last, yeah, the last section.
Okay. All right. Okay, you know, strategic plan goals. On our last year's plan, our next to last section to be reported on with is community outreach and partnership. My section I have not reported on for the building. But for now, Anna is going to give us a brief report on the section that she focused on, community outreach and partnership, and how we did with our strategic plan goals in that area. Anna?
Thank you, Carol. This is gonna be a really quick summary because frankly, the, as you heard earlier from Dimitri and Danielle, you know, the community engagement is really a priority for the library. And as such, there's been a lot of activities. So I'm gonna do a quick highlight, you know, we just talked about the loaner program, right? This is a brand new program, is a way how the library is pivoting to provide new service given the pandemic. And along those lines, there are many other ways that they have been providing service post-COVID and pre-COVID. So I'm gonna start with just highlighting some of the organizations that they have engaged, the library has engaged with and partnered with in this past year. For example, we have, this is pre-COVID, just so you know. Although, well, actually it's a combination because, for example, the Needham Rotary and spoke to them about the pajama drive for Cradle Sue crams that you may remember, there was a box in the library with lots of pajamas, all very cute ones. Then there is another, another partnership that we have that is on an ongoing basis is the Materials by Mail Program. For those who cannot make it to the library physically, back in the day, materials were mailed to them and the expense was incurred by, the postage expense was incurred by the post office. So that does, Dimitri spoke, was in contact with, I'm reading here, a person at North Hill, and trying to read, do some outreach, but that now has been put on hold. Another example is the Needham Community Council. Then in terms of outreach, there were several instances where at least cats from the children's staff went to the farmer's market to have, you know, to promote children's services, which by itself is a very popular part of the library in terms of engaging the community. And same thing for the middle school and high school partnerships that we had. That regard has been Erin reaching out to the high school librarian, they've done study nights, they've done book clubs, and now they're actually trying to restart virtually some book clubs initiatives, just to name a few of the efforts. And let me see. Lastly, from the children's group, there's been a partnership with Olin College, Parent Talk, Baby Basics. And also promoting the programming has been, the Needham Channel has been a partner in this. So they have recorded and covered some of the programs and activities at the library. And the last thing I'll mention is there is a big push for STEM programming that is gonna be happening online through different, for example, one of the partners here is Math Makers that will be working with the children's department. So as you can see, there is lots of activity, there's, and what I see here is a very intentional shift into virtual and trying to find which partnerships are the more effective. Even one last one I will mention is there's a potential partnership with Parks and Recreation and to have, put up a story walk at the Defazio Park. So, so, you know, the sky is the limit it seems. So that I'm excited to share all this different initiatives and I hope that it continues, so stay tuned.
Could you, Anna, this is, that's great, it's very an up report. Thank you that we're really, maybe we've been prodded by the COVID and the emergency to actually be better than we were before. You know, we had a big spurt a couple of years ago and then things maybe fell off a little bit. And here we are, it's really lots going on. Are you, do you have that in a written form that you could provide both?
I have.
And to all of us?
Sure, yes, I've, I have lengthy, you know, people are very helpful and when I ask for feedback. And so I can summarize it because it's several pages long. So I'm just kind of, just giving you the highlights.
Yeah, if you could send the whole thing, I'd love to have it, yeah. I assume the other trustees would as well, as well as Anna and Dimitri and not to mention our recording secretary.
Right.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Marketing and outreach, this sort of covered, I guess, right there with Anna's report. Diversity programs, is there anything besides what we've just heard? And I do, yeah, think we've lost a champion in David Summergrat. I was so sad to hear that news.
Yes, for those who may have not heard.
Very sad.
Yes, I don't know, David Summergrat passed away September 25th. And he was the diversity, the Needham Diversity Initiative President. So.
And my neighbor, he lives three houses down from me.
Oh, wow.
Me and his wife.
Oh, wow.
Old friend, yeah.
So we are carrying on with, with the summit for the NDI. And in terms of diversity programming, we also are carrying on with the Diversity and Discussion Book Club that the library is a co-sponsor along with the Diversity Initiative and Needham Human Rights Committee. So this will be the third year that the Diversity and Discussion Book Club will be launched. And the only difference is that instead of starting, you know, usually starting in the fall this year, we are thinking of starting in January because of everything that's happening from, you know, people working on, at home, having to manage kids to work, maybe remote. And just, just a different, there's also been a proliferation of book clubs initiated by different community organizations. So we're just giving everybody a little break and we're gonna start in January, probably gonna have a smaller scope, about three books. And been in conversations with Anne, Dimitri and Gay Allen to see if the books that we are looking to have are available. And so we are in trying to set up schedules, starting early in January through probably mid or late June. So that is, and we're looking to do, we're also trying to experiment actually. And we are looking to do the typical book club session, which is reading one book and then having a discussion. And it'll be, obviously it'll be virtual. But we're also looking to look at a book in several, maybe two sessions or perhaps three sessions. So we're looking to go have a deeper dive, take a deeper dive into a book so that we can really reflect and come back with some ideas to a second or third session. So that, we were trying, there's this trend going on with book clubs, particularly in the areas of diversity and inclusion, where the participants are not just reading and commenting on the writer's style of the issues, but they want to actually go and take some action and then report back to the group as kind of a support capacity. So there's a little bit of activism going on, along with reading books.
Tom, did you have something?
Yeah, I wasn't able to make the meeting last, on Sunday. My grandchildren showed up for the first time since June.
Oh, wow.
Priority. And so, and so I wasn't able to, can you forward the minutes for that? Or the list of books? I appreciate that.
I will, certainly will, Tom. We're just trying to figure out the logistics and the next steps, but I have, there is an email coming your way.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
That's about it on my side.
Okay, any other diversity? Okay, one book, Dimitri, you had reported at the last meeting that that we wouldn't have one this year, but also that it had to be virtual. So which is it? Is it going to be virtual or it's not gonna be in this year?
It won't be this year and I'm looking towards planning for next year. Maybe we'll do it a little earlier than what we normally do and we'll do it virtually. I'm still, I'm still shaking out all the other things I'm trying to get going, you know, that's on my agenda, but not quite yet. So it's postponed for now, we normally would have it, we'd have had it by now. But I'm looking towards planning for next year and I'll, planning it virtually.
When you say next year, you mean the first half in this fiscal year or you mean next fall?
Next fall, next fall.
Uh huh, okay. Yeah, okay, and you know, maybe we can have something light. You know, we've done some serious topics and we have other book groups that, you know, are on, our diversity group is a serious topic. Maybe we can find something that's, you know, a little of a lift.
So I'll work with the staff, the staff committee that we've had before and and it's actually easier to meet these days with Zoom, so we will.
It is. I noticed that, you know, well, the logistics of meeting are much easier really, so, yeah. Okay, thank you for clarifying. Facebook?
Nancy, your report?
No capital planning space needs, as far as I know. No capital planning space needs, as far as I know. We're still waiting for our ability to do a study, so. The next two items, appropriate patron behavior and children in the library policies, I would like to address together, and Anne is not ready with the revision. I think it's been whatever, I guess, other things have come ahead of it, that's all. There've been a lot of things going on. So I do hope that in November we can address both of those. Even though the library is not open at the moment, it would be nice to know that those were settled. They've been sort of out there quite a while in 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 preparation. And so we come to the pandemic policy. Anne has made some changes based on our meeting last time. And where is it? Just find it. Here we go. My own feeling is this looks almost ready. I had two or three little tiny changes. The first is that in the, in the first page, library services while this policy is in effect, the third line, website will serve as the front door to services should the library close. I would put library building a close. Everywhere else you talk about the library building closing. On page two, I think you didn't mean what you got there. And when the library building remains or becomes partially open, you've got a typo. One, two, three, four, five, six, line, first word.
Cubic.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And the, in the next to last paragraph, building maintenance division may set an increased custodial cleaning and sanitizing schedule for the library's bathrooms and other common areas, period. I don't think you need the rest. Other than that, I, other, other comments on this policy, more substantive than mine, perhaps. Go ahead. Anna, did you have something? No, anyone?
I just thought it was very good, comprehensive. And I appreciate you're making the one change about moving up the communication with the public higher in the document. I think it looks great.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a big, you know, a big improvement to add that as a priority. Could I have a motion to adopt this with these changes, most recent from today?
I move to adopt.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor? I'm going to call your names, so bear with me. Let's see. Let's just go Kay, as Kay.
I.
Jay.
I.
Rick.
I.
Pam.
I.
Rob.
I.
Anna.
I.
And myself, Carol. So that makes it unanimous. I won't even ask for any anti's. Thank you. That's great. And will you just send out a new one next meeting?
New one out, I'll correct this one and send it out immediately. So you won't get it in the next packet, you'll get it shortly.
Oh, that's fine, yeah, it just, you'll add the date at the bottom, et cetera, right?
Right.
The usual, yeah, okay, great. Thank you. All right, so. I think we come to UK for the art committee.
Okay, so just in brief, we are not having a meeting this month in October, but I am going to set one up for November, because we have we have an artist, Nelson Hammer's work up this month, and then who does beautiful nature work, mainly birds. And then the next two months are the Needham Art Association. But then on January, we have open and February, we have open. So I've been trying for targeting just February to start for Black History Month. I'm trying to do outreach to make sure we have, I'm hoping for an African American artist from the Boston area who does some kind of, you know, work that would be of interest to Needham residents. And I've done a lot of outreach, I touched base with Anna, begin with. And I realize it's, it's a matter of building a network, which I don't actually have. But I have, you know, I've worked out, I've reached out to a couple of individual artists, and I've reached out to Mass Cultural Council, the Center for African American Artists, the Multicultural Arts Center. I attended just today the Black Boston Transforming the Arts Seminar. So I got some names of some people who are connected with the Boston African American arts community. And I don't have anybody so far, but I'm, I'm optimistic.
Okay.
And also for January, I wanted to ask Carol, we have three, I have three names of artists, Nan Daley, Diane Bell, and Laurie Levitt, that I think have been approved by the trustees previously. Do you know that whether that's the case?
Nan Daley, for sure, and Gay Allen is with us, too. I think Laurie Levitt also had, and Bell, I think we had not so long ago.
Oh.
Every two years.
Okay.
Nan Daley definitely has been approved, but I don't know if she's capable of doing an online exhibit at this point.
Okay, so we'll have to find somebody for January. And then my goal is to, you know, find somebody, an African American artist for February, and also not just check the box, but to also build a pipeline of artists of diversity, Latino and Native American, and just kind of get the pipeline flowing in that direction. So that's kind of my larger goal. That's our report.
Thank you. MacIver? Anything, Anna?
Yes, I, I will have something more definitive next, next month. But I'm starting to look at some, some topics and also when to, when to start planning or when to host it. It will be virtual, of course, and most likely the beginning of the year also.
Okay, all right, good.
As soon as you have something, let me know so I can get it into the calendar.
Yes.
And get it, get a Zoom thing set up for it.
Yes, thank you.
So it would be a Zoom.
Yeah, so it'll be virtual.
And you, you won't need a, you won't need a snow date.
No, there will no be, no snow dates needed.
Yeah, and you don't have to worry about one room, just one Zoom, yeah. Friends of the library, Jay, do you know if there's anything?
Only, you know, most importantly, the last meeting was focused on the website and their, you know, thankfully, their enthusiastic and generous support to to join forces with the, with the foundation to contribute funding. And so, other than that, there was discussion about upcoming programs, you know, via Zoom, anticipating that the library will be closed, the community room. It's certainly for the foreseeable future. So a focus on Zoom programming and, you know, an update as far as the book sales, which are not happening, obviously.
Right, okay. All right, Library Foundation, and it's only, what, 8:20?
Yes, now I'm unmuted now. I just want to thank Bob for attending our meeting last week, because I think that was very helpful. We did approve funding for the website. And the only other thing I, well, our brochures for fundraising will be going out in a couple of weeks. So we'll see what happens. There is a little nervousness among a few members of the foundation about what's going to happen to our bottom line, because we've had a little dip. So there was, there's a little nervousness. And the other thing which is interesting is our little free libraries, they are doing very well, because we check them, and half the time they're full with other, you know, people putting their donations into those little libraries. So those are quite active right now.
And you have not had to have a reservoir of books. I'm normally, we're taken from the library book sale.
So so far, we're fine, because so many other people, because they can't donate to the library. I think they're filling in the little free libraries.
Same books, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, terrific, and really, thank, thank you to you and Jan and your board for supporting this project. It's, it's such a, it's going to be huge. It's going to be.
Yes, yeah, it will be quite a difference.
Thank you.
Just, just to note that, to Joan, that in my neighborhood, people are putting their extra books out on their lawn with signs saying free books.
Yeah, and all of us have our bags of books set aside. We're hoping we can clear the decks here pretty soon, so we can walk through. Trustee comments? And Tom, I can count on you. Thank you.
Yes, I was thinking, is that, do we know anything about the experience that Wellesley has had reopening? People keep asking me, when are we going to reopen? Well, I think we're doing the right thing in being cautious. And I wondered if, if we've known what our neighbor Wellesley has experienced. You know, like the schools, you know, schools everywhere, and, you know, they're having, you know, situations. And because they're opening and other places are opening, you know, there's, COVID-19 is gaining. So I want to make sure that we keep a pride, Wellesley tells us what, we can follow what Wellesley's doing and seeing is that working. Do you have any idea?
Anecdotally, just hearing from our, you know, Natick and Wellesley, and just from, it's Danielle, I both know from our counterparts. They haven't been that busy being open. They still get the sense a lot of people are afraid to come in. Most people are happy to just come in and grab their stuff curbside and just get out of there. So, and the other thing, the drawback is, you know, and I feel gratified in, both Danielle and I feel just like in terms of going forward with the Chromebooks, that they're only giving half hour and 45 minute appointments, I think, Danielle. There's a lot of grumbling about that from the public, the ones that need to use a computer, because you can imagine, you only have access to it for half an hour, 45 minutes. That doesn't give you a lot of time. So I don't know how much, and again, this is all anecdotal, but from what we're hearing, what their staffs are hearing that are opening to public, you know, it's kind of, some people are happy they can pop in, but it's not, they're not real busy, not what they expected in terms of reopen, you know, even a partial reopening. But don't forget.
Do you know what they're doing with the Chromebooks? I mean, how does that work? Are they, they let somebody use it for half an hour, and then they have to quarantine it for days?
They're using their, they're using their desktops, so that's what they're doing.
Oh, the desktops, oh, I see.
Have to wipe it down.
There's a combination, some places are using desktops where they get like half an hour appointment, then, you know, they wipe them down, they quarantine, you can't use them for, like, you know, they go to another computer. Other places are doing Chromebooks where, you know, they land it out, you know, and you can have it for like an hour, two hour, like the staff has, you have to be in visual range outside of the library at all times. It's very strict.
Yeah.
Like, for five days, you know, I think we're doing really well by our public on that.
I can tell you, there's very few libraries in the area that are allowing you even to use a computer in the building without a reservation. And if you are using it, you can get no assistance from the staff to help you with anything.
Makes a big difference, yeah. Anna?
Next, a week from Wednesday, the Minuteman Directors will be having a meeting, and the bulk of the meeting will be discussing the subject of reopening.
Should be quite an.
Discussing what people have come up against, so forth. So yes, it will be a good discussion.
I noticed in your notes, Anne, that you and Dimitri have been kind of going through all services and sort of evaluating one by one what, you know, changes maybe need to be made even permanently.
In a very general sense, I can tell you that if we were to reopen, it'd be limited. People couldn't go to the second floor, they couldn't go to the children's room. We would have staff available from children's or reference to be able to get materials for people. But really, where people would be able to come in is just the circulation desk and the, and the fiction area. And of course, we've yet, we need to do some measuring to determine what, what the limit of people would have to be, you know.
Really like opening and having to say to people, no, you can't do this, no, you can't do that. That just is irritable to them, I'm sure.
Well, it'd be great if we can have a really excellent, do an excellent job of what we are doing. You know, if people can get an answer when they call reference, if they can get something printed, if they can borrow soon, be able to borrow a Chromebook and have it for the week, instead of having it be like out of circulation more time than it's in use, you know, by having shorter periods. You know, I, I tend to think that that's, you know, let's be excellent at what we're able to offer.
That's what we're striving for, and we're hoping that even if we do reopen partially, whenever that is, you know, people already be getting computing access, printer, you know, printer access, we'll be doing all those things so that it literally will be browsing and looking for materials and spending a little bit of time.
Yeah, what, as Dimitri said, what I have heard from my counterparts at other libraries is that the limited libraries that have opened, at least just for browsing, have, like, it's been very few people. The public has been very concerned about even coming in, they just, they like the curbside. And even those who are doing, who are trying to keep curbside open, the public felt nervous even doing curbside anymore, because the public was in the building. So the atmosphere of safety had been breached. So their, their, the ratio of people had gone down, unfortunately.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, thank you for that update. You know, I think it's instructive to us and how we should be going forward. So, well, this is really amazing, but not even 8:30. And I'm looking for an emotion, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, I can just, just wave your arms. Okay, thank you, unanimous. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everyone.